The council will come into order. All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, founded with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, service members, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Please remain standing for one additional moment of silence from Councilor Seega.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to offer a moment of silence to the Froyo family, longtime Ward Eight residents, John and Judy Froyo. Judy passed away this past Saturday, I think the date was. Her husband was the former school committee for Ward Eight, and her son was actually the first Ward Eight counselor that I can recall when I was a kid. The Froyos have been involved in the Malden community for as long as I can remember. I'd say a good forty, fifty years at least. So I just want to wish them, you know, our condolences on behalf of the Malden City Council. If anybody wishes to attend Judy's services, they will be this Thursday from four to seven at Spetafora Funeral Home. Thank you.
The clerk will call the roll.
Councilor Cologne Hayes.
Here.
Councilor Condon. Councilor Crowe.
Here.
Councilor Linehan.
Here.
Councilor McDonald.
Here.
Councilor Seega.
Here.
Councilor Seminelli. Councilor Spetafora. Councilor Taylor. Councilor Winslow.
Here.
Council President O'Malley.
Here. Under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that Urban Media Arts, UMA, will be recording this meeting this evening. So please be aware, there is audio and video recording of this meeting. First order of business is guests, citizen achievement, and announcements. And the city council will host Miss Dance of New England 2024, Melissa Mora, who was recently named Distinguished Young Woman of Malden 2025. And I'm going to hand it over to Councilor Seega to do a more in-depth introduction.
Thank you. I wanted to invite Melissa here because she is just simply amazing. Melissa Mora is one of my student volunteers at my various community events throughout the year. We have so much fun at the fishing derby, and I think you were at, were you at the Fourth of July this year? It was something else you were at. Halloween. So Melissa has, she is currently a senior at the Mystic Valley Chatter School. She is going to Merrimack College next year for nursing. And she has been a dedicated dancer at Paula Torenzi's right down the street for the last thirteen years. And in 2024, she received an achievement of Miss Dance of New England. And then in 2025, she was announced the Distinguished Young Woman of Malden of 2025. So we just wanted to bring you here to tell you how proud we were of you and to give you a huge congratulations. Do you have anything that you want to say? I don't mean to put you on the squad, but...
I would like to thank my family because they're always my biggest supporters, and I would love to thank the people of Malden for always being there and cheering for me.
You are the best. Thank you. I have a citation. But Melissa, do you guys want to take a quick photo with her? All right.
We'll take a brief recess.
Okay. We're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Thank you. 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 Do we have anything sent in the record in writing?
Nope. Sounds like we have all of our public comment. We now have a consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of a meeting minutes to be approved, two appointments to be referred to Personnel Committee, one appointment to be confirmed, one appointment to be received and placed on file, and three orders to be referred to Finance. Does any councilor wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? On Councilor McDonald, seconded by Councilor Seminelli, all those in favor, or the clerk will call the roll.
Council Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Council Crowe.
Yes.
Council Linehan.
Yes.
Council McDonald.
Yes.
Council Seega.
Yes.
Council Seminelli.
Council Winslow.
Yes.
Council President O'Malley.
Yes. The consent agenda has been approved. The next order of business is motions, ordinance, and resolutions.
Paper 171-25, be ordained by the Malden City Council that Title 12 of the Code of the City of Malden is hereby amended to eliminate the development cap in the MBTA Communities' Multifamily Overlay District, MCMOD-MD1, and eliminate the effective date of final approval by the State of our district compliance application per the determination issued by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And we have City Planner Michelle Romero here to explain what all that means if we need her.
Perfect. I'm going to hand it over to Councilor Winslow to introduce the paper, and then we can go to the city planner.
Yeah, as you recall, last year, we did vote as a council to, on the ordinance to enact the MBTA community as act in Malden, but, and we did that subject to approval by the State. The State has now made comments, and they had a few adjustments they asked us to make. So that's, I think, Planner Romero will speak to that, and Maria Luis is here for the Mayor's Office to explain what those comments were and what we need to do to come into full compliance with those recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Winslow. City Planner Romero.
Good evening. Thank you. So as the councillor just mentioned, or as both of, both the councils mentioned, we did receive comments back. We had to submit the application for district compliance, which included the ordinance that you ordained back in 2023. We met the deadline that we had from the State. We submitted all the required documentation, the ordinance that was ordained, and then in the whole application, all the documents, everything. Then the State began its review process. Partway through the review process, I say partway through, so our deadline was December 31st, 2023, as you may recall. So we submitted everything maybe a day or two before that, but everything was in. And we received comments at some point over the past year. The initial comments were requests for some additional information and clarification. One had to do with our economic feasibility analysis and assessment that we had submitted. There were a couple questions about provisions they wanted us to explain. So these were all done via conferences with the State staff. And so we were responding, we were providing the answers and additional information. They had a couple questions. One had to do with the development cap that was in the ordinance. One also had to do with the effective date that was in the ordinance. There was a lot of other questions and comments as well that were discussed, as I said, through On November 8th, 2024, we received the letter that should have been included with this proposed amendment, which was the letter from the State that is regarding our conditional district compliance. So this was a determination they made that gave us conditional compliance with the law and outlined some of the issues I just talked about in terms of the economic feasibility analysis and the supplemental information we provided, and then identified two issues for us to address. One was regarding the development cap, which was a numerical cap that was included in the ordinance for one of the sub-districts. That was the multifamily overlay district called Medium Density 1. We had actually included a numerical number because at the time, we were told that was possible. At the time of this writing, we were told this is not possible, that that needs to be removed. So that is the first part of the amendment. So I will, just get me, let me get a copy of this here. So the first part of the amendment has to do with removing that development cap, what's called the development cap. And when we removed the development cap, so we removed the number, we wanted to ensure that we were going to maintain the same unit capacity that was required by state law. Remember, we had to have capacity in our zoning to construct a certain number of multifamily dwelling units by right, which was 6,930. We also wanted to maintain the potential growth number, which is what potential growth we may see. So that's not necessarily the 6,930, if you remember. If you don't, I can explain more. But anyway, we wanted to keep, we wanted to remove the development cap because we were required to, but we wanted to keep our unit capacity and our maximum potential growth numbers, which were all the numbers we discussed with you at length several times over the course of 2023. So to do that, we did have to propose an amendment to the district boundary of that sub-district. So that sub-district that's called, again, MCMOD-MD1, so that's Multifamily Overlay District, Medium Density 1. The proposal that's before you is to remove the development cap, so that's the actual technical language that says there's a development cap. And that's in the actual provision, 1212401.C3. So we're deleting the proposals to delete that provision. And then the corresponding part of that proposal is to amend the map, so the boundary of that district. So again, we keep our same maximum capacity number. To do that, the recommendation is to remove the parcel from the district that is 474-484-Broadway. That is the former Star Market site. It's now known as Strata Apartments. So when you look at the map, you can see that's shaded the same color green. So that, for that district, so that will be removed, and we will add in parcels that are up at the Overlook Ridge site. So that MD1, that Medium Density 1 district, included the Broadway parcel and the Overlook Ridge site, a portion of it. So we're basically swapping some of the district boundaries. So the Broadway parcel will no longer be included, and more of the Overlook Ridge parcel development site will be included. So when we did that, needless to say, because as you recall, there was a whole technical model that the State required us to submit all the data and everything, we had to go back to the consultant to update our numbers and everything else, and then submit it to the State to make sure we were still going to comply with the state law with that map change. So we did do that back in December of 2024. However, we've just literally recently heard, two weeks ago, that they've completed their review, and it looks good. We've heard, we'd heard, like, we're looking at it, we received it, but we never got the final, it looks okay, you'll still comply. And needless to say, it didn't make sense to recommend, you propose zoning amendments, go through the whole process, get them to the State, and then the State say, hey, that doesn't comply, you're no longer in compliance. So we wanted to have that pre-review done in advance. That's what seemed to have taken so long. The second piece of...
Before you move on, can I ask a clarif-
Yeah.
If anyone has any questions on the first piece-
Yeah, I'll stop if you want me to.
Can you, what is a development cap again?
The development cap-
Or like, just what is that?
Yes, the unit, I'm sorry, the uni, oh, the unit capacity for Malden, 6,930. And the development cap that we had put in for Sub-District Medium Density 1 was 1,582.
What was the other word you just used? You said, so-
Unit, unit capacity was six-
Is that synonymous with development cap?
No. Unit capacity is what's required by state law.
Okay.
We have to have zoning that allows 6,930 units. In our ordinance, 1,582, we're going to be in that zoning district.
Oh, assigning it to different districts.
It was only, it was only, we only did a numerical assignment to that sub-district because we couldn't make the numbers work. And again, we were told, led to believe that that would be acceptable to do.
Okay.
So otherwise, we certainly would never have proposed it or recommended you ordain it, you know, to have to go back because it's been a process to have to go back.
And then the only other question is, is there a, since 474 Broadway is already developed, is there any negative of just leaving it in there? Like, would there be, because that would mean we just comply more, right?
Is there negative what?
If we left 474 Broadway in, we would still be in compliance, right?
Not necessarily because of the acreage. Keep in mind, the State was looking at number of units, right? So that's your unit capacity. It was also looking at acreage of parcels. And those parcels are outside the half-mile radius of the two T-stations. And the State regs provided that we could have 50% within the half-mile radius. We had to have at least 50% within the half-mile radius. We could have 50% outside. So once we start to add and subtract any parcels anywhere on the map, honestly, the numbers completely change.
Okay.
And we would have to revisit everything.
So having-
So it's not as simple as adding a parcel or deleting a parcel.
I said, I got the purpose of the intent of the law, but it seems kind of counterintuitive that says you can't have more outside. But I get what you're saying. Okay. Thank you.
I mean, you can have more, that, that housing exists-
You just have to add more within a half-mile, too.
Yeah, I mean, that housing development or redevelopment of that parcel exists under current zoning. It's just not allowed by right.
Okay.
To put it into the MBTA zoning is what you would need to really do all the technical analysis to keep it in or pull it out.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
Oh, and I think we have another question from Councilor McDonald and then Councilor Linehan.
Yeah, thank you. So my just clarifying question is, so in the map that was provided, that does contain changes to the parcels in the center-city portion, or does it not relative to what we approved?
It does not.
It's only the parcel, it's only these two parcels in Overlook and Strata?
Yes. In, in the map, you have, shows 474 removed-
Right.
And Overlook expanded.
Okay.
So the dark green is this MD1 district.
Yeah.
That is what's proposed, the new boundary.
Right.
You didn't get a copy, it's in the zoning ordinance, of the old map would have shown another parcel here highlighted, green, the Broadway parcel, and this would have been smaller.
Would, yeah, which was the other Broadway, the Strata?
The four seventy-four, yeah.
Okay.
People call it Strata, right?
Yeah, I, right, alright, yes, I'm, I'm familiar with that. So, the, I, I guess I just, these are all on land that is already developed in large, multi-unit, uh, developments, correct?
The Roqueory, uh, the Overlook Ridge was not. It's in the, it's in the undeveloped areas.
Oh, it's in the undeveloped areas.
Some of which have recently been permitted for development, but they're undeveloped now.
Okay, but the, but the, but the parcels affected are in fact the ones that we've approved the permit for?
Some of them, yes. Some, portions of it, yes.
And portions of it are in undeveloped land?
Yes, um, to make up that acreage when four seventy-four was removed, we had to add certain acreage to the other, so-
I guess I would just, yeah, I mean, building off of Council, of Council, Council President O'Malley's question, I, I don't feel a particular amount of concern about any of this, and I, and I wonder why the switch in acreage. And I would just be content with removing the cap that we're required to remove, related to this, this land that already has development plans around it. If the, if we didn't switch the parcels, is the effect just that we have a higher than we had previously submitted number of buildable, of buildable units? I'm sorry, what is that capacity number?
The unit capacity stays the same, because the state has set that.
Okay.
Um, what would change would be numbers like existing units, maximum potential growth, number of parcels, acreage, things like that will change.
Right, but they would be the same as the, we originally filed? I mean, I don't, I don't have a strong preference about this, because all of this is land that is highly already strategically leveraged, so I don't think this changes anything about what we expect is likely to happen in the near future, based on our best knowledge. Please tell me if that is, is that, does that seem reasonable to say?
I mean, I think, I think it would change. I think that was the reason that we recommended the development cap was to try to stay at that number.
But I'm saying of the parcels that are affected, do you think the development cap is likely to cha- is, has the capability to change any behavior? Or like, just development decisions?
Uh, I think, I think, I think you'd have a different maximum potential growth number, I do. Uh, you could see potential addition, um, you could see if, if there was a reconstruction. This will, again, allows by right, if, if this changes. If it's part of the MBTA overlay, it's allowed by right. So, I'm not sure, I'd have to really look at the numbers and see, but there was a reason that it was done at the time.
Okay.
So, we were trying to stay close to that number, which I know we had that discussion last time. Do we want to be at the number, over the number? But that's what, you know, had been decided. So, we were, we were, we're proposing these changes to kind of stay in accord with what you'd already decided, if you, even though there were some changes, it'll, it's basically will keep-
Right.
Your past decision in effect.
Uh, yes, and just, and, and with respect to that, I think different numbers and different dimensions of the approval had different salience to different ones of us appear. Which means they, some of us cared about the map, some of us cared about this number, some of us cared about that number. So, everything changes something. And I, I'll just say for myself, I mean, given that we're all talk, we're talking about parcels that are already part of large-scale development that is already permitted or in the process of being permitted, I don't think this really change, this is not likely to have any real-world impact in the near future. And so, I don't have a strong preference, but I would just say, as we get guidance about this, I am personally less concerned that we ratchet down other things to keep the unit capacity or the develop, you know, the development capacity in check. Um, I think part of the goal is to allow there to be a reasonable construction of housing, and that I, I just, I, I, I understand how much over-management, you know, it feels like the state is requiring us to do about this, but I, so I, I, yeah, I don't feel strongly about this. I, I'm, I'm willing to support the will of my colleagues, I just feel like we could, I, I don't want to have to come, keep coming back here to micromanage this time after time, if we're not really changing any of the work on the ground. That's just my perspective. I, I do appreciate the work, the amount of work that it has to happen on a staff and consultant level in order to try to dot all of these i's and cross all the t's at the same time. So, I, not to dismiss that, just to state my, um, perspective on this. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Linnahan.
Thank you, Council President. So, I, I don't want to be redundant, but I have kind of similar questions, Michelle. I just want to make sure with the, uh, the incoming next phase of development at Overlook, this isn't, is this changing the unit mix? Or the parking ratios or anything like that? Are we basically set to go with everything we've been talking about?
Um, that will be up to the developer.
Okay.
Um, the developer has special permits for the next two buildings.
Okay.
Um, the developer also has site plan review approval for the next two buildings. I believe they have the stormwater management permits in place. Um, they have not filed for building permits yet. Um, I know there was an announcement about some affordable housing funding money going to them, but they haven't started, they don't have building permits, they haven't started to build yet. Um, this was, so, I guess my point is, this zoning will change what's allowed at that property. Um, tho- several, several of those properties.
Mm-hmm.
We did discuss, I, I want, you know, to be, um, to let you know, we discussed back with the same developer when they were discussing proposed zoning amendments to change the zoning up there. This is going back a couple of years. And then, we knew MBTA zoning was coming. We actually suggested, do you want to wait for MBTA zoning? Because, you know, part of it's going to be included and it might, and they said, no, we want to go forward. We know what we want to do, we're committed to what we're doing. I don't know if that helps or it doesn't, but that particular developer we've been dealing with assured us they were developing under the zoning-
Okay.
That they wanted to, eventually we got to that. Um, but this, there, there will be new zoning that would apply now up there. If a future owner decides to do something, I can't speak to that. I don't know of any plan to do that, um-
Because it does seem like there's pretty good community buy-in for this. I know a lot of work has gone into it. So, my concern is just that it's not curtailing what they want to do or making them, you know, spend money to change gears at the eleventh hour. But what I'm hearing is, God forbid, if the, if that plan fell apart or if many years down the line it sold or was being redeveloped in some way, it would meet this higher, higher zoning, I'll say? Because it could, it could, the build-out could be different than what is there now?
It could be, um, I don't know exactly how it could be. They would definitely still have to do the fifteen percent affordable. We did get that part approved-
Great.
-by the state. Um, and I, we, when we proposed all the dimensional requirements for your consideration, we looked at density, we looked at heights, we looked at open space requirements. We looked at what was similar for underlying zoning. So, there, it's, there, nothing up there is going to allow a lot more than what could go under current zoning.
Mm-hmm.
Similar to most of the other sites. We didn't change, you know, the zoning, um, dramatically from what was underlying. Same thing in the downtown area.
Okay.
Um, it's not like now a twenty-story building could go up there. It's still, I want to say the caps were fo- four or five, um, up there, which is what they are under current zoning. I'd have to look back to tell you exactly, um-
That's okay.
Actually, I have it right here, so, um, four stories maximum height.
Okay.
So, um, lot area setbacks, we, open space, we mirrored pretty much everything we could, if we could do it, you know, so that we weren't really changing that much.
My last question is, with, I'm, I'm thrilled to hear the fifteen percent was accepted. I know we're entering a market where this probably won't be the case, but let's say we ever could make the case that twenty percent or something higher than fifteen was supportable here. Do we then have to go back to the state and re-justify that for the MBTA community-zoned areas as well? Or would that, like, ha- what overrides what in that scenario?
We would have to.
Okay.
This, this will, all the, um, IZ is getting written in, was written into the MBTA zoning. We, we used, except for the special permit requirement, and I think there was one other, I don't know if it was the density bonus, there was something else that didn't get written in, but the numbers, everything, all the filing requirements, all the design standards, everything got written in.
Okay.
We proposed it. They actually didn't accept our economic feasibility in the beginning, and we had to redo part of that. That was one of the comments we got over the year. But, um, if, I think the state capped it at, I think to go above ten percent, you had to do this analysis.
Yep.
And I don't remember, um, state law, um, allows a maximum of, the state law didn't require affordable housing, but it allowed a maximum of ten percent to include a higher. We had to do a new, we had to do an economic feasibility analysis. I vaguely remember the state did have a cap, though, on that.
Okay.
I don't have it in front of me. If it, if it was anything, it might have been twenty percent, I'm for some reason remembering that. But, yes, we would have to, if pa- if the state law allows it, we'd have to go back in and amend, petition to amend the zoning, because anytime we change any zoning that affects the MBTA zoning, we'd have to tell them.
I see.
Otherwise, we risk n- not being in compliance.
Okay, I appreciate it. I mean, I'm sure they don't want it higher than a certain amount, because then it can't get built, which defeats the purpose. But, just wanted to understand what that would look like. I, I agree with what my colleagues have said about, let's just get this done. Don't want to come back, but if there's an opportunity to leverage the market more, if it swings in a more favorable direction, just wanted to understand the process. I'm all set.
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Counselor Semenelli.
I'll yield to my colleague to my left.
I, I just want to clarify that, I'm just planning to make a motion that's be referred to as joint planning and rules and ordinance committee, so we're not having any vote tonight other than to prefer, for, so, so, you know, I, I, I think the questions are good, because it's, it's, you know, it's been a while. I, I, even, it's been over a year that we talked about this stuff, so I appreciate Michelle making an explanation, but we will have a, a full hearing on it. And, you know, this was introduced because, um, with some scheduling things where there's like mid-May or whatever is going to be the time to have that meeting. And so, we're just trying to make sure it got in the queue so that the public hearing can be scheduled, so. So, there's going to be more time to talk about this, and it's going to come back to the council for the vote. Um, you know, sometime privately.
Thank you. So, we have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Uh, and then the, the last thing from the, the chair is, when we do have that hearing, um, if we could just, um, also prepare to discuss what impact it has on the commercial portion of the, um, the sub-district that you were talking about. Um, in terms of like, I know that there's currently like, commercial space requirements. We don't have to get into it now, but we've been trying to increase the commercial space, so.
That, that's the mixed-use portion of it.
Oh, okay.
That's not being affected by this at all.
Okay.
There's no change. This has been changed to the multifamily overlay portion of the MBTA, not the mandatory mixed-use portion of the MBTA. But if I could just quickly, the other change that you need to know is being proposed is the effective date. They originally said, explore it, we don't think you can do it. We started to explore it, and they since came back and said, you have to remove it, we will not approve it if it's in there. So, that's the second piece. That is being removed from the multifamily overlay and the mandatory mixed-use. The effective date, so the effective date will be when you vote to ordain it, not when the state approves it.
Understood, and what I, I was cl- referring to the RIO in terms of the im- the impact to the commercial portion of the RIO. Um, right, isn't there, isn't there a requirement, like, some commercial space at Rose Quarter?
There is.
Yeah, that's, that's the only thing I was talking about.
But, um, I think we left, I think we left, I think we put the RIO pieces in the mandatory mixed use. Because like, this whole building site is in the mandatory mixed, uh, you, district.
Okay, that, actually, now that, now that you, it's, so actually the map that is attached?
The pink, the pink is mandatory mixed.
I think one of the challenges, it, it has dots. It doesn't have, it doesn't have words. Um, at we- at least a copy that we have just has dots.
Oh, really? You didn't get it, words?
No, we just have a, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what, I think it might be a formatting thing. So, um, I will, uh, we have a motion that's been seconded. Um, the, and I don't think we need to have a roll call, so all those in favor to refer it to a joint ordinance and planning board hearing, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That has been referred unanimously. All right, Counselor Semenelli.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, did you want to speak?
Just for a second.
Yeah, Counselor Semenelli.
Believe it or not, I just wanted to say, Michelle, I'll make, some of my questions have been answered. And I, I agree with, uh, my colleague, Counselor Winslow, and having a subcommittee meeting on it, uh, for some more answers and questions. But, once again, I just want to thank you and your team, because it seems like you did a lot of work here. And I appreciate you doing all that and bringing that to us like you always do. So, I, thank you very much.
Thank you.
May- maybe it's my phone. It looks like on the computer, it shows, it shows words on my phone, it shows dots, very odd.
Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next order of business.
Paper one seventy-two dash twenty-five. Be it ordained that Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden, twelve-point-oh-eight-point-oh-four-oh floodplains, twelve-point-twelve-one-ten floodplain districts, twelve-point-thirty-two-point-oh-six-oh definition zoning are hereby amended to include new regulations as required by FEMA so that referenced areas will remain eligible for FEMA-sponsored flood insurance programs.
Counselor Winslow for the paper.
Okay, so, the, the intent here is this paper will be filed, and, and will, will be, I will make a motion to refer this to, uh, joint rules and ordinance and planning. So, just to be brief about the paper itself, um, FEMA is going to finalize updated floodplain maps for Malden in July. So, the, the thrust of this ordinance is to make sure we refer to the new floodplain, um, ordinance in our, floodplain maps in our ordinance, and that makes those areas eligible for FEMA flood control insurance. So, it's, it's important, um, and so, uh, we're working, um, we, the State Department of Conservation and Recreation, the Flood Office has, had sent along a, a model ordinance that I went through. We actually have, um, a pretty substantial floodplain ordinance in our zoning right now, so it's just updating some things there. And then also, um, our Engineering Department under Yem Lip has a, um, its own set of regulations for floodplanes, so they will oversee the program. So, this is just really making sure we're staying in step with the federal flood, uh, insurance program and that. So, that's the main thrust of this, and then, you know, it'll be further presented at, um, you know, a joint hearing and comments then, but it's, that's really the thrust. We've been asked to do this, and it has to be done by, you know, July first, basically, so that's, yeah.
Thank, thank you, Counselor Winslow. I appreciate, it's been seconded by, uh, Counselor, uh, Crowe. And I appreciate you including the redlined, uh, paper here, it's, it's easy to follow. Uh, so on that motion, is there any discussion? A yes vote would refer this to joint ordinance planning, a no vote would not. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That has been referred unanimously to a joint public hearing.
Okay, and then I just have a point of information, and then maybe would-
Counselor Winslow.
I know I have been approached, um, on several other papers for zoning that, um, that were not on the queue tonight. Um, but, but there is also interest of making sure those go on the same hearing night. And so, um, the suggestion was that we, we, we vote as a council to make next week's council, the whole meeting, into a regular council meeting. So, I think it might be good just to make that motion right now. I mean, under Rule one-point-oh-five, we can vote as a majority of the council to change, um, our schedule just by a majority vote. So, I say we have, um, a, a couple of papers that, um, that are, are, that need, uh, uh, another one. Um, we did just vote on site plan review for religious, educational, and daycares, that, um, there's a technical amendment we need to make to that. And, um, so that, that's really, uh, and then there was another, uh, paper as well. So, I would just make that motion that we, um, under Rule one-point-oh-five, we schedule next week's meeting as a full council meeting, so we can take up that, um, those votes to refer to those papers.
So, Counselor Winslow has made a motion to turn next week's, uh, meeting, not from a committee of the whole, but into a full council, so that we can take up some additional zoning papers that are required. There's actually, I think, also the reorganization of the Health and Human Services and Inspection Services Department. That was originally included in the charter stuff, but we realize that we can actually move that forward sooner, because we're out, right now, outposting. So, we want to get that done as soon as possible. Um, and I do see Counselor McDonald, uh, has a light.
Yeah, thank you. My question was just, do we need to make it a full council meeting? Or sh- do we, could we just suspend the council rules to consider these as part of a committee of the whole?
Yeah, we could do either. The thing is, uh, it's probably just cleaner and gives us more flexibility to just have it as a committee of the whole. Um, again, it-
You mean to have it as a full council meeting?
Yeah, yeah, as a full council. And we, I mean, we can always keep it as a sparse. We don't have, it doesn't have to be, like, don't put anything in, everyone else, and we will have a short agenda. Um, maybe some committee reports potentially, but it should be pretty short.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, the other dynamic is, by announcing it a week in advance, we are letting people know that we're planning to have a full council, not a committee of the whole.
Okay, that's fine. I, I anticipate a, you know, good discussion in finance next week, so, well, I'll talk with Lisa about scheduling that, but-
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Sounds good. Is there a second to Counselor Winslow's? Seconded by Counselor Semenelli. Uh, all those in favor, uh, a, a yes vote would make next week's meeting a full council meeting. All those in his favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously.
Great.
Paper one seventy-three dash twenty-five. Order that the city solicitor's office draft the necessary and appropriate documents to be presented to the city council for a vote to officially declare the undeveloped city-owned lot comprised of approximately eleven thousand eight hundred sixty-eight square feet on Crescent Lane and identified by the city assessor with parcel identification number one-three-eight-seven-eight-seven-seven-one-eight to be permanently designated as public open space and conservation land. And that, upon such council vote, in approval by the mayor, the conservation committee, or other entity necessary to hold a conversation, conservation easement on the parcel in perpetuity, file such documents at the Middlesex Registry of Deeds.
Counselor Winslow for the paper.
Thank you. Um, as you heard, um, Mr. Roby speak, um, I've been working with, um, the Crescent Lane neighborhood since twenty-twenty-one, um, first initially doing some cleanups of this property. Essentially, um, you know, Crescent Lane is, sits right on nearly the Millrose border, and, um, it's, it's this nice little quiet, dead-end street. Um, and it's just below Williams Street. So, at some point, it seemed like maybe there was some sort of right-of-way that ran from Crescent Lane up to Williams, and it maybe got de-designated, but it's city land. So, it's just a, you know, eleven thousand square foot lot that's there. And the neighbors, um, you know, took it upon themselves first to just work to clean that lot up. Um, and then the question became, uh, they actually, you know, got, um, some naturalists to assess what the vegetation was, um, as Brent mentioned about, um, doing, uh, you know, some stairs and stuff like that. So, um, and one of the questions that had come up then was that it was a little bit unclear, because it's sort of open land, um, in a residential setting, what the, the boundaries were and whether the, the neighbors had encroached. So, one of the suggestions was to make sure that there was a good survey taken, so we really knew what was city land and what was private land. So, that step was taken through CPA application. And, you know, we've had these conversations since twenty-twenty-one or even early, I think it even goes back to twenty-eighteen, to take some parcels that are, um, city land that is setting undeveloped but is not designated as conservation. Um, and, and, you know, the Robys have been, you know, just bringing this back to our attention. And, um, there was actually a paper where we were looking to do this broadly with a lot of the parcels. And I, I think the challenge is that, um, you know, there's a variety of categories. Each parcel ends up being very unique in terms of, you know, what the title work is. Is it something, a lot, a lot of these undeveloped parcels are what's called tax title. And there's sort of three different phases of tax title. It's really hard to just blank and say, we're going to take a hundred parcels and make them conservation land. Um, I think the other thing that I found was that, um, just looking at, I thought there's something called Article ninety-seven of the, the Massachusetts Constitution, which basically, you know, empowers the city to buy land for conservation purposes. And when we do that under that article, that land becomes permanently protected, and we need a vote of the legislature. But when looking at that article, um, it wasn't clear we could just declare this piece of land conservation land. It looks like we have to go as a conservation restriction, which is a different avenue. So, so really, the purpose of, of this order is now that we've done a lot of the preparation work in terms of the survey work and, and, and cleaning up the land to really, uh, help. And, and, and Alicia McNeil is also in, in the loop and said, she doesn't have a specific order to move ahead right now on this. So, she asked, you know, that something be developed. So, I just thought it would be good to have this order to really direct the solicitor's office to focus on this parcel. And then this could be the template. I mean, I think, uh, that we can then use to con- truly convert land piece by piece from kind of this undesignated, unclear status to conservation status. So, I think we have a, a motivated neighborhood, a property that has, looks like it has pretty clear title, and, um, and it's a good parcel to, um, be, you know, a separate little kind of pocket green area in this neighborhood. So, I, I just thought that this would be a good example so that we can work on this and, you know, between myself and the legal office to truly work through the, 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 uh, the complexity that comes of trying to make this designation effective. So, so that's, that's, I just ask that, uh, my fellow colleagues, if you have any questions or if you have any questions for the, the Robys or whatever, I'd be happy to entertain them, but it's, it's just more complicated.
Could you, could you clarify, what's Crescent Lane off of?
It's off of kind of Lebanon, yeah. It's a little bit, it's just a funny, there's actually two. There's a Crescent Avenue and a Crescent Lane, but it's, it, it parallels Swains Pond Road.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Yeah, there's a, I forget, I guess the name of the street. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's a very-
Oh, you're saying this is, but this is, is this up by Rudolph? No?
Um, no, Rudolph, it's, it's- It, it sits between- Yeah.
I see Mount Pleasant to Crescent Lane.
Yeah, so Ma- Mount Pleasant to Crescent Lane, yeah, that's, yeah. So, Mount Pleasant is just like a little, almost block.
Yeah, sorry, I was just trying to find the actual parcel.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay. Oh, wait, hold on, I don't know, I found a different one. Okay, and are there any questions on this?
So.
Aside from mine? Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Winslow, for bringing this forward. We had some good conver- We had some good conversations last year in the Public Properties Committee, folks may remember, and got a list from the city of all these different... All the different parcels that the city has that are undeveloped. And got that in a nice little GIS view. Thanks, Steve Famo, if you're watching this. And the... And so my recollection from that conversation was also that we wanted to have some clarification of what those different categories were and who had authority, what level, and what different things meant. Because if something is a park, then it includes public access. What... So one of my questions was, is the intent that there be public access to this land in the, you know, in the future?
Yeah, I mean, that's the intent, that it would be like, you know, we're talking about a little trail and maybe a seating area and that type of thing. But it wouldn't be used as a playground or anything like that. It's really just to be like a short, little nature trail and, you know, a kind of solitude park kind of thing. But it would generally be relatively undeveloped, besides just kind of trails, kind of amenities, that type of thing.
Okay. I mean, that sounds lovely.
Yes.
And I think...
Passive recreation is really something.
Well, but it's more than... I mean, it's a subset of passive recreation.
Yeah, right.
It's also not a frisbee golf course.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I would like to ask that in the process of drafting this, we also get a brief memo from our law department outlining the different possible categories of the utilization and what... And particularly, what law defines them? If it's state law or local law, or I understand parks trigger something in the Constitution. So I... I'm happy to support this. I think this is, as you say, Counselor Winslow, a great opportunity to set a template. And I would just like to know, like, what is the set... What's the range of possibilities we could have for some kind of, you know, designation of undeveloped land for future use in various ways that would at least include conservation, you know, sort of designated conservation land, something more official like a conservation easement? What needs to qualify under our Open Space and Recreation Plan or other state kinds of categories? I understand there's some state categories for land that allow us to access certain types of supports or funding. And then what constitutes a park and how that happens? Those are at least the ones I know about, but there may be others. And so it'd just be helpful to know what the lay of the land, as it were, is on this. Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also am encouraged by the fact that this could be a template. And I'm interested to see how this plays out. It reminds me of... There's a lot of sections of the West End where there's maybe privately owned parcels, but there's like adjacent to or the only access to them is off a paper street, kind of similar to this, something that never got connected all the way. And now it's a low-lying wetland. And I'd love to see if there's more that we could do. I get asked by neighbors of those types of properties a lot. Can we protect them or purchase the parts that are privately owned? So I think this is an interesting template. I happen to have friends who live on this street. I think it's a lovely little area. I think it's very off the beaten path. You wouldn't necessarily even know that it's there. And as Counselor McDonald said clearly, so we're all sitting up here trying to find it. But as Counselor McDonald said, I am learning through the hospital process, the Malden Hospital redevelopment, where we're trying to build what I'll call a park. The words you use are super important, and it's very restrictive on what funding you can access and what easements you need or don't need. So just want to echo and kind of underline that point as well. But this sounds fantastic, and I'm happy to support it. So great work.
Thank you. And just from the chair, I will state and then I'll go to Counselor Cologne Hayes. Yeah, I think this is a great model. You know, there are, I think, a lot of these small parcels in our community. And, you know, we don't always know why they're there sometimes. There could be an old drain that is going through them. There oftentimes, there could be something, you know, geological about it in terms of why it wasn't developed. And so I think it does make sense to make this, you know, conservation land. But understanding the difference between this versus a preservation easement or a conservation easement, I think is going to be important and helpful. Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Thank you. Just briefly, thank you for bringing this forward. And it definitely looks like a lot of work's been done. I'm looking at this. I'm like, wow, all those red lines on this sub-paper. It's a little confusing, but I'm going to be taking a look at this just for the exact same reason that Counsel Linehan just said. I'm thinking of a few spots around our area. We might be thinking of the same one, that this could be a great template for. So thanks for putting this work in, and thank you for bringing this forward. Definitely in support.
So Counselor Winslow, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I have a motion to the council adopt the order.
Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Seminelli. The... All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The order is adopted unanimously.
Paper 174-25, Order the City of Malden File With the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development A Consolidated Plan Including Applications For Grants Under the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 As Amended and the Cranston Gonzalez Housing Act of 1990 As Amended To Be Administered By the Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development For Fiscal Year 2026, Including All Understanding And Assurances Contained Therein On Or Substantially In The Form Presented To This Meeting In That Gary Christensen, Mayor And Chief Executive Officer Of The City Of Malden, Be In Hereby Is Directed And Designated As The Authorized Representative For And In The Name In Behalf Of The City Of Malden To Sign And File Said Plan, To Act In Connection With Said Plan And To Provide Such Additional Information As May Be Required. So this was a paper, if I could... Thank you for indulging me. My apologies for this. I was waiting for the final touches. This is in regards to the CDBG budget with the mayor's letter of recommendation. And while I was waiting for the final touches to just be added to that budget, I failed in following up with the Office of Strategic Planning And Community Development, which is why you have a paper on the agenda with no attachments to it. I think the intention of this paper is to be referred to finance. I promise you, you'll have all the documents that you need when that happens. And so again, my apologies for not sending you the budget in advance of this vote.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to have this scheduled for a finance meeting, which we would need to do anyways, and is always the venue, you know, how we do this. Can I just ask, what is the deadline to get this approved? I see Alex Pratt in the audience.
Please. Hi. I just want to correct my colleague. It was my fault, not hers. That I didn't send it to her in time. So that was on me. The deadline to send it to HUD is May 15th. I just heard today, actually, that that is also the date that they will tell us the actual dollar amount that we expect the budget. So what we have, which we will share with you, is a contingency budget. And then there are adjustments that are made based on whenever we, in fact, get that information.
Okay, understood. My anticipation is we might wait a few weeks then? Or do you need it, you know, filed immediately?
Sooner is better than later, because we then upload what you all confirm into a system that would then send to HUD by May 15th. And HUD says the data could come May 15th, and it could be June. It could be May 1st. We just don't know at this point. But the good news is the... And this almost felt like a fluke. The CDBG and home funds that Congress appropriated as part of that stopgap measure for maybe a month, month and a half ago, actually level-funded what we got the year before nationwide. So we expect that our CDBG allocation will be within, I'm going to say, within 5% plus or minus of what we got last year. So we're not in a horrible position as we, you know, expected we might be.
Understood. Well, we can work on the scheduling. I'm happy to have it referred to finance and happy to make that motion when it's appropriate.
So just to clarify, do you have the budget that you could send to the council?
Yeah, we can send it over tomorrow.
Okay. So are you still developing it, or is...
We have developed a contingency budget. So we're assuming, I think, in CDBG, 1.4 million flat. We know it will not be 1.4 million flat, but we have language that you all will discuss in committee and vote on that says, if it's 1.43, this is how that extra money gets spent. And if it's 1.35, this is where those funds are cut. So depending on what that actual value from HUD, whenever we get it, ends up being, you will have approved the budget that allows us to move forward with that, that incorporates that contingency language, which we have done in the past couple of years because this is not the first time that this has happened. Although it is, I think, the latest.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Seminelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. When I was... Just a suggestion. When I was here years back, we used to have like a community development committee, subcommittee. I don't know why we don't have that anymore. I don't know if you guys just do it, discuss it in committee now, if that's the way it goes. But I think my suggestion would be that this council should be, you know, having this in a committee throughout the year on funding being spent as far as the CDPG funding goes. I... Because I have, you know, several... Several things in the work, myself, my neighborhood, that's going to take a lot, lot more meetings than just, you know, a few finance meetings on where the money's going, how it's getting there, and where it's needed most. And I think that as a council, we should be... That should be something that's most important to us. And we talk about community and community development. But yet, this council, again, I don't know where it came from. I'm just telling you from years past, because I was the chairman of that committee for 10 years. And it was the CDPG, all the projects that are going, that are being developed, where they are, you know, what the process is, and what kind of help and resources we can give to the administration that's also working on bringing in other funding, grant money. So I think it's important that the council plays more of an active role. And you, as the council president, Mr. President, could start that and do that. And I would just recommend, just a recommendation, that you do that. I'd, you know, I'd like to see a couple of good counselors on that puppy, you know? It's just, honestly, it's a lot of money that comes into this community. And I think that the council needs to start taking a bird's-eye view on where that money's going and why it's going there, and who needs it most. It's just my suggestion, Mr. President.
Thank you for your comments. I can't comment on the past practice, but my understanding is that because this is a financial paper, they have to initiate with the mayor. And I think that that's probably why it is running this way currently. That's just off the top of my head. But I do think that in terms of community development, a committee like that that works in tandem with the mayor's office and the Office of OSPCD... I finally got it. First time in years.
Listen, I haven't gotten it yet. I haven't gotten it yet. So...
I think that they'd probably be willing to work with some type of that, probably in a...
Well, you know, again, you know, you're just getting down to basics here, right? I mean, the fact of the matter is, we're the lines of defenses for our neighborhoods, right? And we've got to go to different resources to get the funding, to bring into the neighborhoods that we live in and that we govern. And I just think that, you know, this is my personal opinion. I'm just saying that I just think that the council should be more involved in when it comes to community development and where the money's coming. I mean, I know CDBG like the back of my hand. I mean... But there's might be some other councils that don't and may qualify for funding in their community that they didn't know that they did, and how to get it. So I just think it's important for the council to be aware of these things that are going on. Because here's the thing, I mean, the people up in the office, even though they do a great job. I mean, I worked with them for years. And, you know, none of this stuff would happen if it wasn't for them dotting the i's, crossing the t's. But it does come from development from the community, you know what I mean? So, I mean, look at the temple site on Bryant Street. You know, it's been in... It's been in operation for three years. It's been, you know, an easy and a difficult piece of property to obtain. But it's going to create 32 units of affordable housing, great development, seeing the plans. Alex did a fantastic job with it. And I'm, you know, looking forward to working with him more on this project than others. But again, I just... I strongly believe that one of the things that I was very disappointed on when I came back to the council, that there was no community development committee. And I just think that's important for us. Thank you.
So the action item I'll take is that maybe we can like work... Do a make a little working group about how to maybe try to see how we can thread the needle on that. Counselor McDonald, do you have any last comments?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I just wanted to comment on this point from my colleague from Word 7, which is that we do have a community engagement and involvement committee. And I wonder if that committee wants to have a conversation about how to promote... You know, I know there's an open opportunity to apply, for example, for CDPG funds. And like, how do we bring that to the right people at the right time? And so anyways, just wanted to name that we do have a committee dedicated to very similar pieces to this, and we could start there. And would like to make a motion to refer this particular order with the attached budget that we will receive tomorrow to the finance committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Seminelli. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That has been referred unanimously. Next order of business.
Paper 175-25, Committee Report, The Standing Committee On Finance, To Whom Was Referred Paper 74, Series of 2025, Having Considered The Same, Make The Following Report. The Committee Recommends This Paper Out Favorably As Amended With The Following Added After The Word Project, Provided That The Appropriation Is Not To Be Used To Repair Or Restore Any Item Whose Sole Purpose Is Religious.
So I just would like to go on the record and state that I have filed an appearance of a conflict of interest disclosure form with the city clerk related to what this proposal's about. I am a parishioner of St. Paul's Church, which is looking to get some of these funds. I was formerly in leadership at that organization. I'm no longer in leadership, and I had no involvement in the preparation of this grant application. So because of the disclosure that I filed, I believe that I can handle this without there being a conflict. But I must disclose that. Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, I want to make a motion to receive the committee report. And I'll discuss this amendment with the next paper, yeah.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The committee report is received.
Paper 74-25, Order That The Appropriation Enumerated Below Being In The Amount Of $14,500 Be Appropriated From The Community Preservation Act Fund For The Following Project, St. Paul's Parish Envelope Assessment Project. Historical Preservation Reserve $14,500. Total appropriation $14,500.
Counselor McDonald.
Thank you. So this is the final recommendation for a grant from the Community Preservation Committee for this year. And this one, we took a little more time with because it relates to a religious building, St. Paul's Parish, which is a recognized historic building and certainly a just well-known building in Malden over on Florence Street. And the church is not only an active congregation, but it is also a... You know, the congregation, the parish, hosts a number of community events and community organizations and so on. So we had this discussion, and we had a memo from our legal department and multiple meetings to discuss this. CPC funds have been used many times in other municipalities for church restoration projects. Churches are, in fact, often one of the most historic, you know, buildings in a city or town. That's not uncommon. And the... And again, especially when that recognition already exists, that certainly qualifies it for CPC consideration under the rules of the CPC. The CPC Association or like the organization of CPCs across the state also has some guidance about this. There was a lawsuit in Acton, I believe, about a... Not a small grant like this, but a larger-scale restoration grant that was challenged in court. The Supreme Judicial Court gave some standards to use, which we then considered in our decision about whether to recommend this favorably or not. And we were in dialogue with a member of the leadership of St. Paul's Parish. Ultimately, we recognize that the Constitution protects free exercise of religion and that it would not be appropriate or permissible under that to reject an application on the sole basis that it is a religious organization. Like, you can't discriminate. You cannot provide preference, but you also cannot discriminate against a religious organization. However, we also have the Dover Amendment in Massachusetts, which requires that we not use public funds to support private purposes. And so recognizing that the building itself has value to the community, that the building actually can be bought and sold at future points, which has certainly happened to churches in Malden and other houses of worship that may not be Christian. And that the... So we recommended the paper out favorably for this project, which is really only an envelope assessment that can enable the congregation to figure out what it wants to do in the future and set a bit of a... Just set a little bit of a precedent of what we might be willing to consider in the future, which is to... of what we might be willing to consider in the future, which is to set the stipulation that the funds from the CPC cannot be used for any item whose sole purpose is religious. So not something that may be used by the congregation in a religious context. But if there is no other purpose for the building besides the use in a religious ceremony, then that would not be appropriate. I don't think that actually applies to anything in this project, because it's just about the outside of the building. But we wanted to be clear about that, sort of for the record, for the next time that this comes up. So that received a, a tacit endorsement from the member of the leadership from St. Paul's, who was there, and unanimous support from the committee. And I just think, on a, on a personal note, I think this is a good place to land. I understand this project does have strong support from the administration and the CPC. So I think this gives us a path forward that protects all of our various constitutional, legal, and community obligations to move this forward. I'm just, Zaheer, how'd I do? All right. Zaheer says I did okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Seminelli.
I just, my question was just like the separation of church and state, is that like not a thing? I mean, are we allowed to give money to churches? I didn't know we were.
I, I would invite the city solicitor, if, if, I know that you provided two, two memos, if you want to maybe summarize them.
Oof. Two?
So, Counselor Seminelli, so I don't know if you were at these meetings, but basically you have the, the anti aid amendment in Massachusetts, which many states have a similar anti aid amendment, which basically says you cannot use public funds to, for the purpose of aiding a religious organization. They've been around for a century or more. They are stricter in separation of church and state, they're, they, they more strictly separate church and state than what the current U.S. Supreme Court is saying is allowed. In the last several years, the Supreme Court has had a number of cases involving using public funds to support religious organizations, and in most of those cases, under the current Supreme Court membership, they have said that cities and towns and states cannot, cannot deny those funds in a, in a number of different contexts. One context was, for example, where I think the state of Missouri had public funds that they were granting to resurface, resurface playgrounds. A church wanted to apply for these funds. The state of Missouri said, sorry, you know, separation of church and state, we can't, we can't give you these funds. Supreme Court said, well, no, you're discriminating, you're, you know, inhibiting their free exercise of religion because they're a religion, so you can't do that. So the Supreme Court has sort of taken this new direction in the, in the law when it comes to free exercise versus separation of church and straight, church and state. And they're becoming more and more, you know, they're saying more and more that public funds can be used, and can, not only can be used, but they cannot be denied. And in fact, I think this month, there is a case before the U.S. Supreme Court about whether a public charter school, which is explicitly religious, can be a public school and receive public funds. So the area here of the law is just so uncertain, it's all over the map. And what I've given, the opinion I've given the city council is my, my best guess as to what the current Supreme Court membership would, would decide if it were in the one in a million chance to go up to the Supreme Court.
So, so it's not, nothing, nothing, the law hasn't been changed? You're telling me that, that it's just your theory that they're going through this change at the Supreme Court, and they're going in a direction, they haven't changed any of the amendments?
That's up for debate. I mean, I, I would say the law is being steered in a new direction.
But it hasn't been changed?
Um, no, I would say it has been changed. It's, it's, it's going in a new direction that it has not been historically. So I'm trying to predict as best I can what that direction is.
Right, but it's still not solid, clear.
Oh, yeah, no, it's a, it's a minefield.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate the information.
Thank you for that. Good question, Counselor Seminelli. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate the Finance Committee's sensible, you know, review here, and, and the city solicitors, you know, further digging into the, you know, the, the psyche and cases at the Supreme Court. I, I mean, I do think, I, you know, one of the things of having grown up in California, and where most buildings are, you know, if it's older than 1950, that's historic. And then coming to New England and having, you know, villages and even places like Malden to have these churches that date back to the 1860s or before, you know, houses of worship are really significant historic things. And since the community has passed the Community Preservation Act with that intent, and, and, and certainly, we also adopted the, you know, demolition delay law that focuses on significant community buildings. So I, I think, you know, and I think the other thing, we just have examples in our community that there are houses of worship that have changed denominations, changed religions in our community. They stay, they're still being used for religious purposes, but a totally different ideology and approach. And so I think that's really the intent of freedom of religion, is that you are free to worship? And the state's not supposed to put its hands one way or the other, but in terms of making sure buildings that can be used for worship are maintained, I think that's, that, that is. And it's amazing when you go to a place like France that has, you know, 12th century churches, or, or, or even older places, that, both, both because of the materials used and some port from the state, that they are maintained. Like I say, I think we have a good example of that, you know, having support for buildings that have been used, or are, or have been used for houses of worship is a distinction from necessarily supporting that religious philosophy. So I'm supportive of this paper, and I think it's a sensible way to preserve important history, but also be respectful and, and not, you know, favor one religion over another. Thank you.
Counselor McDonald.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I think my, was on from the past, but I just want to correct it. I misspoke and said the Dover Amendment when I meant the anti aid amendment, so thank you for correcting that, Zaheer.
Almost perfect. Uh, is there a motion? Counselor Seminelli.
Mr. President, the other, the other thing I would just add, I'd just be careful here, I think. There's a lot of different denominations out there, and a lot of different churches. And a lot of them, well, we need a lot of support, especially since COVID. So, I mean, once you start giving money out to one denomination, you better be prepared to be giving out to every one of them that come before you. So I think that was the separation of church and state. Maybe that wasn't the way it was designed in the, in the, in the, you know, from our founding fathers, but I, I would say that, you know, that's what it means now, in reality. You want to say something? Go ahead, go ahead.
Historically, these anti aid amendments that proliferated across the states, they kind of have an unsavory origin, even though they kind of also serve a good purpose. The purpose now would be to, to not favor one religion or another. And one concern about giving public, using public funds to support a religion, whether it's for a religious purpose or not a religious purpose, is basically you're favoring certain religions that happen to home, that happen to own buildings or property that the society deems as worthy of preservation. And that's just an accident of history. Certain religions don't have that, don't get that support. You're, you're basically favoring one religion over another.
Right.
And that's where the, the Establishment Clause, you know, separation of church and state issue comes in. Not everybody would, would agree with the direction that the Supreme Court is going. I mean, in some of these decisions that I read, there are vigorous dissents from certain justices saying, this is not the direction we want to be going. We want to give states and local governments the freedom to have more separation of church and state to avoid favoring certain religions over another.
Correct.
Back to the anti aid amendment. The reason these anti aid amendments proliferated in the 19th century actually was because at one time, there were established churches in, in the states. However, the population was changing. Most of those churches were Protestant churches. With the influx of Catholic immigrants, suddenly all the Protestants realized, whoa, 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 if we're going to have to, we don't want to support Catholic churches, because if we're using public funds to support Catholic churches, we don't want that. So a lot of them actually enacted these anti aid amendments, saying, guess what? We're not going to use any public funds to support any church at all.
Right.
So they kind of had a discriminatory purpose in their origin, although, you know, today, they arguably serve the purpose, a good purpose, which is neutrality among religions.
Right. No, I agree, I agree. Look, I'm just, again, I'm just putting out some caution here. I'm, I don't really support this paper. I think that we should keep our hands clear from that. Again, I've, I've talked to several pastors, priests, and, you know, they're all having issues going on in their buildings as far as repair goes. And, you know, again, what, if you, if you give it to one, you got to give it to them all. That's the old saying, it's not broken. If you give to one, you got to give to all. And I just think that you're going to have a lot of applications coming up here, looking for funding. And I think we're going to be heading for some stringent times coming ahead in the next few years. So I think we got to be very careful on how we spend our money and where it's going. And, you know, I, I mean, you know, if the Supreme Court wants to go in that direction, you know, I, listen, good luck to them. I, just as far as I'm concerned, I think that government should stay out of religious services, period. And I think this is a bad example for the city to be giving up money to a, to a church entity. I, I just, I've never heard of it before. It, you know, I don't agree with it. Thank you, Mr. President.
I appreciate you sharing your, your thoughts, Counselor Seminelli. Counselor Seega.
I'll make a motion that we table this paper until we can get some further clarity on the issue.
Seconded by Counselor Seminelli. And before we take the tabling motion, I do, I do know we, Counselor Cologne Hayes had her light on, you, you wanted to speak, if, and then we'll take that up.
Sure, thank you very much. I was just going to point out to anyone listening here that we did have lots of discussion, lots. There was meetings after meetings, these questions came up. We, it was something that was looked into for all the reasons that were said, and it, the CPC, people applied to the CPC, like, even though we have to approve them, that, you know, anything in the future would go to the CPC and then come here if they felt it was deemed worthy of our funding, and they're the best people to really realize that. So I just wish people were there, or maybe kind of followed up on this, but I didn't want the public to think that this was lightly, like we did a lot of meetings on, and research on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Cologne Hayes. So there's a tabling motion. And the only reason I, I, I will call that motion, actually, I, I see your lights, are you?
It's non debatable.
Okay. Oh, and they, okay, hold on. So all those in favor to table this, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
The paper is tabled.
Can, can I ask a clarifying question?
Seven to one.
Okay. Would you all like to see the memo from the legal department?
Uh, Counselor Mc, Counselor McDonald, so it is, it's tabled. But I'll follow up with you offline, if possible. Thanks. Next order of business.
Paper 176-25 Committee Report, the Standing Committee on Personnel and Appointments, to whom was referred Papers 91 through 93, and 126 through 133, Series of 2025. Having considered the same, make the following report. Committee recommends these appointments out favorably to the full council.
On Counselor Linehan's motion to receive the committee report, is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The paper is received. Yeah, and I think.
There are a number of them.
Yeah, so.
Well, we do have a guest here who's one of the individual appointees. Can we do those before we do the group? We've been sitting here all night.
Yeah, it's a great, so we're, what?
It's, so, um, in the paper, it's 91 through 93, and 126 through 133, we want to do as a group. So what we want to take up is Lisa Picardi, 126-25.
So we're going to take 126-25 out of order.
Paper 126-25, mayoral appointment, Lisa Picardi, 18 Phillips Street, Malden. As a member of the Disability Commission, said term to expire September 20th, 2026, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council.
Counselor Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to just point out Lisa's been sitting here the whole night. I thought, thank you for coming. You know, we ask folks to step up and put their name in the hat for these positions, and it's remarkable that you come in so many nights, so thank you for being here. So Lisa, as it says on the agenda, is going to be filling the unexpired term of former member Nicole Masolom, who stepped down. Lisa came in, we had a lovely conversation, she has an HR background, does a lot of volunteer work. She's really excited to serve the community, and I think the Disability Commission is a really dynamic group right now, and she'll make a fabulous addition. So we were unanimous in recommending her favorably to the full council.
On Counselor Crowe's motion to approve, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes, all those in favor, please say, oh, we have to take a roll call, the clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Seega.
Yes.
Counselor Seminelli. Counselor Winslow.
Yes.
Counselor President O'Malley.
Yes. Congratulations.
Very dedicated.
So with that, I believe we're going to take up the, the bulk of the.
Want to do the planning board first? There's three, three folks.
Yep. Oh, yeah, so we're going to go.
91 through 93. Can we do it that way? We can, if I read them all, unless anybody thinks that they don't want to. Sure.
If it's anything less than unanimous, I can read them all, and then we can do one roll call vote on behalf of all the papers. So long as the body is.
Yeah, I think that's what I'd like to do.
So we're going to read all the papers and vote on them as a group, unless anyone objects. Okay.
Paper 91-25, the mayoral appointment. Vickers Verma, 85 Harvard Street, Malden, is a full member of the planning board, having served as an associate member since 2022. Said term to expire March 1st, 2023, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council. Paper 92-25, mayoral appointment. Stephanie Stone, 19 Pine Street, Malden, as a full member of the planning board, having served as an associate member since 2022. Said term to expire March 1st, 2026, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council. Paper 93-25, mayoral reappointment. Kenneth Antonucci, 14 Spruce Street, Malden, as a member of the planning board, having served since 2021, said term to expire March 1st, 2030, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council. Paper 127-25, mayoral appointment, Amanda Treat, 64 Woodland Road, Malden, as a member of the Commission on Climate Action and Sustainability, and said term to expire March 5th, 2027, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council. Paper 128-25, mayoral appointment, Diego Maldonado, 17 Hamlet Place, Malden, as a member of the Commission on Climate Action and Sustainability, said term to expire March 5th, 2027, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council. Paper 129-25, mayoral appointment. Limpin G, 51 Cherry Street, Malden, as a member of the Commission on Climate Action and Sustainability, said term to expire March 5th, 2027, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council. Paper 130-25, mayoral appointment, Rachel Sarut, 50 Pierce Street, Malden, as a member of the Commission on Climate Action and Sustainability, said term to expire March 5th, 2027, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council. Paper 131-25, mayoral appointment, Ricky Ma, Ten Lynn Wood Street, Unit 404, Malden, as a member of the Conservation, the Commission on Climate Action and Sustainability, said term to expire March 5th, 2027, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council. Paper 132-25, mayoral appointment. Robert Fitzpatrick, 66 Med Fit Street, Malden, as a member of the Commission on Climate Action and Sustainability, said term to expire March 5th, 2027, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council. Paper 133-25, mayoral appointment. Ron Cochran, 105 Cherry Street, Malden, as a member of the Commission on Climate Action and Sustainability, said term to expire March 5th, 2027, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council.
So on Counselor Linehan's motion to confirm these appointments, is there a second? Great, and I'll hand it over to Counselor Linehan to, do you want to speak, or?
No, just briefly, since that was a lot, I'll just, you know, for anybody watching. So we had three folks coming in for the planning board, one was a existing reappointment, and then two folks that were moving from associate to full member. And then we had this new group of seven folks coming in for the new Commission on Climate Action and Sustainability, which you may remember we created earlier this year as kind of an outgrowth of the Climate Action Plan. So this is going to replace the old Clean Energy Committee that we used to have. I really want to underscore both these groups of people, we interviewed both the planning board and the. We interviewed both the planning board and the sustainability as kind of group conversations. These are some really rock star candidates for these. I, I honestly don't know how we're so lucky that we get people with these kind of resumes coming in, but I cannot wait to see what the sustainability group in particular does. It, it's a new group, as I said, it's got some amazing folks. Um, and so, yeah, just had a really great conversation and totally unanimous in recommending them all favorably.
Thanks. And so that's a motion by councillor Linehan, seconded by councillor Crowe. Um, the clerk will call the roll.
Councillor Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Councillor Crowe.
Yes.
Councillor Linehan.
Yes.
Councillor McDonald.
Yes.
Councillor Seega.
Yes.
Councillor Seminelli.
Yes.
Councillor Winslow.
Yes.
Councillor President O'Malley.
Yes.
Those are confirmed.
The, yep, confirm unanimously. Congratulations, everyone. So with that, um, the docket appears to be clear. Personal privilege. Councillor Linehan.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm getting my calendar up. Um, just a really quick reminder that Ward Three, um, myself and the Girl Scouts are going to be hosting a cleanup of Felsmere Park and Pond area on Saturday, April nineteenth. That's going to be at nine AM. Just meet up by the picnic tables. Um, all are welcome. The Scouts come out every year and we love to see other members of the community joining us, so come on down if you're available.
Councillor Winslow.
Yeah, I just wanted to wish, uh, everyone in our Jewish community, um, a wonderful Passover that is coming up, uh, quite soon, so, um, that'll be coming up this coming weekend, so wish everybody a, a welcome Passover.
Any other personal privilege? Oh, we're just real, I just want to, so we did our cleanup at Wade's Mouth this weekend. I just want to thank Darren Josie from the Great Malden Outdoors, um, and Idle Hands, as well as Rock Spot and all the volunteers that came out, uh, to help clean up the park. Uh, we found some pretty crazy things in the woods this year.